This is City of Beaumont, the City of Council. Came from the, you know, close session. And we're back to regular session. Today is February eighteenth, Tuesday. And can you do a round call, please?
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Lara.
Here.
Mayor Santos.
Yes, here. Now, would you like, Mr. Seating, can you agree the actions for discussion?
Yes, the council met in closed session. Item number one was conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, 6.91. And that involved Urban Logic versus the City of Beaumont, the City of Beaumont versus Norton Rose Fulbright, and City of Beaumont versus McFarland and Anderson. And there was no reportable action taken on those items. And then the last item, item two, was conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, 6.94, American International Group, AIG. And there was no discussion on that item in closed session. So that's a report out.
Thank you. And let me request for any excuses. Obviously, we're all here. Would you, if you could do the pencil reading, would you lift the chicken neck, do you lead us?
Yes, sir. Thank you, flag. Ready, begin.
My pleasure, Agent, this is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, check your mic and see the time.
Thank you. Okay, any adjustments to the agenda or conflict of interest disclosure? None? Very good. We'll do the announcement, recognition, proclamations, and correspondence on item number one, introduction of Deputy Chief, please.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my absolute privilege tonight to introduce to you our new Deputy Chief of Police, Anthony Yocum. We currently have two Deputy Chiefs of Police, so if you see me smiling ear to ear for the next about four weeks, you know why. But our current Deputy Chief had announced his intentions to retire and gave us opportunity to recruit. After a national search, we selected Anthony Yocum. And so I'll read a quick bio for him. So Deputy Chief Anthony Tony Yocum has been a police officer for 32 years, and he was hired by the City of Upland in 1988. And during his time with Upland Police Department, he worked a variety of assignments, including patrol, SWAT, gangs, detective, supervisor, some management assignments, which culminated in his last three years of serving there as a police captain. In 2017, Deputy Chief Yocum was hired by the Cathedral City Police Department as their Deputy Chief, and over the last 10 months has served as their acting chief of police. He's a graduate from California Post Command College, Session 54, holds a master's degree from, in emergency services administration. He's received numerous awards and commendations throughout his career, including distinguished service medals and a life-saving award. He's also won several medals from the California Police Olympics in martial arts. Deputy Chief Yocum's wife is a prosecutor with the Samuel County District Attorney's Office. Together, they have three children. He maintains balance with friends, family, and working out. So I introduce to you Deputy Chief Anthony Yocum.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to say I'm really excited to be here and join the family. I've heard great things about Beaumont and especially about our chief here. Just really excited to get started and been two days now and been meeting all these wonderful people and just it's good to have, to be here and thank you all for having me. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Public comments, period, items not on the agenda. Any one person may address the City Council on any matters not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table to give it to the city clerk over here. There is a three-minute time limit on public comments. There will be no sharing, passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the City Council from discussing or taking actions brought by you, your comments. Any?
Yes. Francisco Zolby.
Hi, good evening. I would like to talk about our roads here in our beautiful city of Beaumont. My knowledge about this matter comes from city meetings on YouTube and our city Facebook page. And with my knowledge, I know the city has approved of Pennsylvania Avenue interchange project on September 19th, 2017. This project is set to cost $667,037 for the design services and interchange project, another $279,889 for the widening part, and for a project grand total of $946,926. This project is almost two and a half years later, still nothing has started. And it needs to, because we have, you know, those new businesses coming in at First Street and Marketplace. This street does not only need that project. At Pennsylvania and Sixth Street, we also need a turning signal. It does not have one as of right now. It does come, coming from, oh, sorry about that. It comes from, on Sixth Street, it does have one going onto Pennsylvania, but going from Pennsylvania onto Sixth Street, either way, does not have a turning signal and it needs one desperately. This is not the only street that needs a turning signal as well. We do need one on Beaumont Avenue and First Street, another one on Beaumont Avenue and Sixth Street. And I come here with great, you know, like, I'm very passionate about this because I see so many accidents on our streets lately and they could be, they could be, how do you want to call it? Oh, I'm sorry. I just thought about it, I was at school right now. Oh. They just really need to be done. Our streets, you know, this is a beautiful city. I moved from San Bernardino to Beaumont for a better life for all, everyone in my family. I don't want to have a repeat of San Bernardino. I don't want a repeat of any of that. I ask you, as City Council Mayor, please, pleased, we need to address these streets. I see that there's a new project going on at the Highland Springs where the new houses are coming in. I believe, you know, Pennsylvania is more important. That's just because I live in Seneca Springs and, you know, getting from one side of the freeway to the other is very hard. Getting to schools, very hard. Everything about living in Seneca Springs is very hard for us right now. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. No more. Oh, okay. Very good. First of all, thank you for, you know, being here and, you know, speak about that. And thank you for everybody, you know, wants to speak, you know, you're welcome in here. Thank you so much. Okay. Now, we're going on the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are taken in one action item unless item is pulled for further discussion here or at the end, action items. Approval of all ordinances and resolution to be read on title only. Okay, anyone I'd like to discuss anything on this? I have one on item number six. And we...
Should I make a motion to approve the remaining?
Would you, would you please, yeah, the remaining?
I'd like to approve items number two, three, four, five, and seven of the consent agenda.
Second. Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Lara.
Yes.
Mayor Santos.
Yes. Okay, let's discuss the item number six on this. I mean, this is like, you know, just clarification. First of all, Jeff, I really appreciate having this financial, you know, December, at least that's the, on the, for six months. And I really, really like to see this. At least that's the, on the, for six months, and I really, really like to see this. On, on your page one, on this, I mean, you know, on general fund budget to actual, probably are you seeing it right now?
Yes.
Okay. I'll go on, on the, on the transfer. I mean, there's a, it says in here that, you know, there's a $5 million prior to years, you know, one time, $5 million, we know that. I mean, that one transfer of solid waste revenue. Where did we reflect that in here? I mean, it should have been reflected in here on the?
So it is. If you look on the first page, now, we're doing, we're correcting this, by the way. We're going to have it on its own line item as a one-time, because we, the next, the next report you see on this, it'll have it pointed out separately because it's a one-time thing and we don't want you to expect it to repeat.
Yes.
But if you look on that first page, my third note down, which is, it's right now contained under charges for services, and you'll see that that's where it's sitting now. But it includes that one-time $5 million. So the one where you see $7.1 million for 19 and 20, that includes that $5 million.
Okay. Let me follow up on that. I think there'll be a fees on a yearly basis on this. I mean, are you going to put it on that line item also?
So we are going to, the one-time is going to be its own thing and then it'll go away after this year. And then on a regular basis, we're going to be getting a franchise fee that comes in. It's $2.1 million.
Yes.
And that will be listed in your franchise fees, but it'll be able to be pulled out separately if you desire it.
Okay, very good. On, on the same page on that, on the administration, same page on the first page, I'd like to have a clarification. It says in there on the line item, 200 administration, down below, it says 77 line item contingency. Why we have a contingency on the administration?
So most cities do this, by the way. The city manager has a small contingency that's allowed to be spent on certain items that come up. It's, 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 it's an item, we haven't spent it yet, but it's an item that's there
I know, it's sitting there.
For things that come up that are just out, out of the norm, that you need to spend a little bit of money on.
Okay, thank you. I'll take note on that. On the next page on that is the human resources on the item number, you know, 1240. And there's 1.1 million in there. It says a workman's comp and, you know, recruiting costs. There's a big variance on that side. Is that, is that including the workman's comp of the whole company or how many employees we have on? I'm not investigating you, I just like?
No, no, that's okay. That's okay.
I like to clarify numbers in here.
So the reason for the increase from prior year is largely due to workers' comp and some insurance cost increases and things of that nature. So that's your, that's your largest reason for the increase there. But the workers' comp that is experienced by other departments is included in those departments as well. So that's not, that doesn't include all of it.
Okay. Now, next item on that is the legal, legal, you know, items in there. Does it show in there that, because we're expecting a, or we've been receiving a, you know, WRK reimbursement and that, where do we, you know, reflect that?
So we, this is an expense area here. We usually would include that in recoveries. So we would have that in recoveries, and I can get a report for the council on what we've recovered to date. I don't have that in front of me, but I can get that for you.
Very good, thank you. That's the thing that I'm getting at right now. On, down, down below on the police side, you know, and there's, there's a 1.3 million workman's comp and pension cost on that. Is that a one-time or a catch-up number?
So the pension, the, the city made a decision, and wisely so, to prepay its, the liability portion of the pension. So that'll be amortized essentially over the whole year. But since it was essentially 1.3 million and a big chunk of it is in the police department, at early points in the year and even by midway, you still have that large payment that's been made in the first part of the year. So it makes your expenses look a little high earlier on, and then later on, it starts to dovetail down.
So it'll taper than on the end of the year?
That's part of it. And so you'll, you'll get closer to reality as you get later in the year. So that's a good thing. As far as workers' comp, it is excessive, excessive compared to prior years. Whether it's one-time or not, I couldn't say. I, I don't have that crystal ball, but it has, it is high, and we've considered that for our budget purposes.
Very good. Another one on the, on the next page on that, the fire department. I mean, I know we've called fire. We do contract with them. I mean, we got the, you know, for the year-to-date on December, we got, you know, $956,000. Is that only a quarter or is that a two-quarters?
So that's only one quarter reflected there. We have another bill. In fact, next meeting, you'll be seeing the second quarterly bill. It's a little bit higher than the first quarter, and you'll be seeing that. So when that comes out, we are trending a little under budget, even when that second one comes in. So right now, you're at 21%. I expect you'll be somewhere closer to 45 or so percent when you're, when you have two payments.
Yeah, because when I look at this, I mean, I thought we got the two quarters already received on that, because the first quarter will be April and then December will be the second quarter, but we receive only, we booked only our first quarter.
Right. What you have there is what's been actually booked and gone through your books. Until the council approves it, it won't, it won't hit your book. So I didn't, I didn't, I didn't assume that, that approval. So you, you've only got one quarter here at this point.
So we didn't do any journal entry on that to reflect that?
It hasn't been booked until the council approves it, and that'll be coming on your next meeting, actually.
Okay, so we don't do accrual. Okay. Next to that is the, you know, building maintenance on that. I mean, you know, it shows on the building maintenance, is, is that a contract or really we have employees in there or we do allocation for that?
You're talking about street maintenance or which one are you looking, oh, building maintenance?
I'm looking, I'm looking on the item 6,000?
Yes.
Yeah, and then you got the city pool of $37,000 for the fiscal year of, you know, December, and that's $37,000. Do we have a pool of employees in there or just a?
So we run, you know, pools on a seasonal basis, so you, certain times of year, you won't have much in the way of expenditures and then other times you'll have more. So if you look on month to month, it's very irregular. We only run the city, the pool for certain times and we bring in, you know, seasonal help for that.
Okay. But on the building maintenance, is that the contract we have in there? I mean, or that's employees?
Yeah, no, that's, there's no personnel services in that particular budget.
So this is a contract?
That's operating cost, that's correct.
Okay. Lastly is the, hopefully lastly, I mean, on the next page on that is the, the water waste, wastewater on that side, because you notice, say, two of, six payments posted. And it means that there's four, four more payments that being, being posted for the half of the year?
Yeah, typically, and it just, I've gone back and looked at the last few years, you know, you haven't been pretty new here.
Yeah, I know.
The last couple of years that I looked at, we typically have been recording four of the six payments in the second half of the year. So we've, we've actually got that third payment that's now been posted. If I ran this for January, you'd see different numbers. You'd see that third payment's been posted. But so the reason I highlighted that is it looks like we're low, but we're trending pretty close to our revenues. It's going to be very close. I don't, and we might be slightly under, but we're pretty close.
Very good. Lastly is the, you know, capital improvements or the debt service. It shows in there on the December, we got almost $3 million in there, and then you got the note in here, principal and interest payment completed in first half of the year. And then our budget is 47, I mean, 4, 4,700. Is that only interest or with the principal?
So the second half of the year, we make two payments, semi-annual payments. The first half, we have, we have a principal payment and interest. Your second payment for the year will only be interest. And so this is why I say we're going to be on budget, because we don't, we don't have to pay that principal payment as well. So this is a, a known number that we had going in. When I first saw it, I didn't know that as well.
Yeah.
I had the same exact question that you did, but there was about a million dollars in interest in the first, in the first payment that, or in principal. That second payment won't have that principal payment.
So it means on this debt service payments, the first one has a principal?
That's correct. And the second one does not.
Why we do that? I mean, it doesn't expense. I mean, you know, we usually, you know, on, on the principal, we, we apply that to, to the principal of the loan, and we expense out only the interest.
Yeah, well, the, in this case, we have, you know, both of them are hitting your books. This is a cash basis here, but when we account for it, you will have your loan coming down for that million dollars. You'll have the principal payment coming down on your balance sheet, but from a cash standpoint, for your budget, you're still spending the money.
So the second payment doesn't have the principal?
It does not, that's correct.
Hmm, okay. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the December 2020 financial reports.
I'll second.
Actually, that's December 2019. Sorry about that.
Oh, yeah. Guess that would be a little?
You're getting ahead of yourself.
Ahead of ourselves here.
We have a second?
I will admit my?
I'll second. I'll second still.
All right. Councilmember White.
Receive and file the 2019 financial reports for December.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Mayor Pretum Lara.
Yes.
Mayor Santos.
Yes. No public hearing?
No.
Okay. Action items, approval of all ordinances and resolution to be read by title only. Item number eight, resolution of support and authorization of $10,000 support, I mean, sponsorship package for 2020 IOA championships presented by Morongo Casino Resort and Spa. Stop, please. I have to take out my?
Councilmember White, I must apologize, but earlier today, I thought it was 2081 that was last year, so.
Eight.
So my, my calendar's a little messed up, so I apologize to council. So you have received a request through the IOA Championships and the Morongo Club, Casino Resort and Spa, excuse me, Tuckett Golf Course, to become a name sponsor for the golf championships that they have out there. So this event is an LPGA qualifier. There's about 140-plus players that come to Beaumont, bringing an estimated 5,000 people total. So when you look at families, coaches, and some potential visitors that come to the community estimated at this stage. The event has been held here since 2013. The city has indirectly provided some assistance to the event through things like coordinating the event on our city events page, providing, you know, kind of various pieces of assistance. More importantly, you've got a group of community volunteers who have been actively involved in supporting this event and supporting the players and trying to provide hospitality for a number of years, really, I think, since this event's been going on for the past five, six years. So the plan for this event really is to try to make Beaumont a long-term home for this event. One of the things that IOA is the key sponsors looking for is some additional community commitment and sponsorship and embracing of this event. To, so, excuse me, so to that event, we had met with some members of IOA and Morongo to talk about what a potential community sponsorship meant, what it would look like, what is the impact of return back to the community for such an agreement to provide sponsorship? What would the potential liabilities to the community be, you know, should there be any in terms of a sponsorship package? So we really discussed and roughed in a elements or components of a sponsorship package, which I've identified, and there's really kind of three main points that a sponsorship would entail. The first is really looking at some community marketing, including some web exposure on the event webpage. It could be targeted to specific markets or specific areas that we want to target our marketing to, in addition to addressing the overall nationwide marketing that they do for the event. We were looking at creating a challenge event with this. So there's a pro-am that happens in the first day of the tournament, or I guess before the first day of the tournament. And that pro-am basically is a pro, one of the pros on the circuit that play with a sponsorship team. And what we would look at is having Beaumont actually sponsor three of those pro-am teams. One would be for the City Council of Beaumont, one for the City Council of Calamasa, and one for the City Council of Banning. So there's a four-member team, so it's a pro and three city council members who would be voluntold to participate in this event. And preferably, since it is an LPGA event, we should probably have one of our female council members participate on that team would probably be.
Right.
But, but again, that event would be on March 16th. But, but it's really a team-building and kind of relationship-building effort to create some camaraderie with our area councils, but also to try to provide some broader exposure to the event. So, so, you know, our councils, our neighboring communities, our area is aware of the event. And then one of the things we've talked about at the council level and from a strategic perspective is trying to develop additional free, preferably to the community, events, keynote signature events. And one of the things that had been offered up in the discussion was the possibility or the opportunity to create a Taste of Beaumont event. So it's an opportunity for our local food vendors and beverage vendors to be able to set up some canopies and some tents and to provide food at the event during the course of the event, anyway. And so again, kind of again, like a Taste of Beaumont that would be held during one night of the tournament. So the concept there, again, would be broad advertising and marketing of that to, again, bring people out to watch some golf, but also to enjoy the food and beverage that is available within the city of Beaumont. So felt like that was also extracting more out of those marketing dollars and that you're providing opportunities to provide exposure to existing businesses that are within the community. Through the due diligence process, we did submit about 13 questions to Morongo and IOA. Their responses are included in the attachment. I won't go through those unless you had some specific questions about them. So one of the questions that we need to answer in providing sponsorship, particularly, we're talking about the allocation of public funds to a private event, a for-profit event. So in looking at it and analyzing and looking at the responses that we got, had developed four conclusions in terms of the types of benefits that the sponsorship package I've described would bring to the community. First is there's significant media and marketing exposure, and then again, you have the opportunity to target some of that effort to your identified locations and, and regions. You're also drawing really regional, all the way through to international exposure to the community. You're creating a high-quality, free regional event, again, that provides more exposure and marketing for our local businesses. And through the establishment of the local challenge event, you're really setting yourself up to foster more positive relationships with our neighboring communities, which is always beneficial. What we propose to do is if you elect to provide the sponsorship for 2020, again, this would be a one-year commitment that I'd recommend to you. We would revisit, again, our normal budgeting processes moving on into future years, but would be an allocation of TOT dollars for the $10,000 upfront cash contribution. We are currently budgeted for around $264,000 of TOT. That's transit occupancy tax revenue that comes out of hotel heads and beds. We really are looking like we'll be upwards to around $300,000 for this year. So you have a little bit of extra revenue that you'll realize in TOT above what was budgeted. If you compare that to last year, last year, you generated about $335,000 of total TOT revenue. So we historically have been coming in a little bit better than that. Ostensibly, this event, especially if it were to grow, is going to provide additional TOT revenues to the city and hopefully a little bit of extra sales tax as we see more There are some indirect costs as well, so should we provide a $10,000 sponsorship, you're looking at some additional event insurance we would want to carry. There is insurance carried by IOA and by Morongo, but? Um, there is insurance carried by IOA and by Morongo, but, uh, we probably want to carry a little bit of additional insurance just in case. And that would range up to about $1,000 depending on, uh, what we try to cover and how we do it. And then, we're looking at some additional staff time, estimated to be right around $2,000, kind of indirect time, so we'll be contributing towards it. So, um, recommendation for this would be to, um, uh, sponsor the IOA Championship presented by Morongo Casino and Resort, um, due to the fact that it does provide you a public benefit, um, and that you may legally authorize the sponsorship package for this event. Again, it'd be recommended that the sponsorship, sponsorship agreement be, uh, restricted at this time to the 2020 event to be revisited. We would look at what, how this event goes, how our sponsorship worked out, um, and we would follow back up with a post-event report as well as some discussion as we move on into our next budget discussion. So, that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you. Public comment? No? Any, uh, discussion? I could, um, get questions on my side.
Yeah, so, um, I appreciate it, there was, you've actually hit quite a few of my questions, so thank you for that. Just to reiterate, um, nothing coming from general fund directly, nor reserves, it's TOT going into general, going into expenditure. Okay, and, um, one of my question was sustainability, so, uh, thank you for having that follow-up and evaluation at the end. That'll help decide, um, you know, where the money went and if it was, um, basically getting what we, what we thought we were. At some point, I guess, we need to be talking about whether we're going to add it to our signature event series, uh, list, you know, 4th of July and so forth. Another conversation, but, um, we'll, we'll even do that if we're going to continue. The only other couple of things, uh, so, you mentioned on here, so page 81 shows kind of a social media example, I guess, of what we might see. Social media and web exposure and so forth. And it says that we, we can use the logo for the social media, but I don't see anywhere the logo for the city would be on official print, nor banners and so forth. How far does our sponsorship, sponsorship take us on our, um, PR?
Well, they will, uh, definitely include it in any of the onsite, uh, advertising that they do, and they'll, they'll put their, uh, sponsorship, their corporate sponsorship and those sponsorship logos, you know, throughout their, uh, marketing pieces. In addition with their banners, uh, so their, uh, website banners and all the marketing advertising that they do for this particular event, the city logo would be included in all that. So, on the web presence and all the social media work that they're doing, we would also have a, uh, our logo would be utilized there. They will utilize their official logo and our official colors, so they have to utilize our specific, uh, officially adopted scheme to do that. So, on the targeted marketing areas that we want them to look at, they'll also include our information with that as well.
Right, and thank you for the due diligence questions, a lot of them are very specific, so thank you for that, that's all.
You're comfortable with the, any liability issues with the interface with that when we sponsor?
I am. The players and, and, Mr., you know, we can tell, we had a long conversation about part of this, but the players are contracted to the Symmetra Tour. So, they're contracted, they're playing through IOA and through Symmetra, so their contract goes there. In addition, there's a contract between the tour and Morongo, and again, there's some additional assurance and some identification in that relationship, um, which does extend into the sponsorships, and then, in addition to that, we will carry our own coverage. So, I think we've got it covered, um, in just about every way I could think of.
Okay. I ask that not so much because somebody might trip and fall, let's hope not, on the field or something, on the golf course or something like that. Simply because, uh, the events, the, um, there'll be alcohol, et cetera, and that's not something the city usually sponsors or gets involved with. So, I just don't want our liability to be extended in that direction in a way in which we might not be covered.
Well, you have two other events where there's alcohol right now, too, so you got the Cherry Festival and 4th of July. So, it's a similar situation, I would think, to those, yeah.
Good point, good point. And, um, I don't know if there's, if we agree to do this or if we modify this, does that mean that we go ahead with the Council Cup? Or does that mean that that has to be further clarified?
Well, so you're saying if you want to reduce this to 5,000 or some lesser amount, um, then, yeah, we will need to go back and visit with them to see, um, what, um, adjustments would need to be made to what happens with that sponsorship package? So, if, if you want to do that, I think we probably need to prioritize what things, what elements you would prefer to do with that money, yeah.
I mean, I think that all of what you said is very good and very creative and very appropriate at some, um, I think that we need to, um, push all of the social media, all of the awareness. I do think it's a prestigious event that happens here at Tuckwood, and we should maximize that as much as possible. But I also think that when we potentially move ahead with the Council Cup idea, um, I think that we need to make sure that the optics of it somehow or other reflect the point you brought up, uh, that it's an LBG, LGPA, Ladies Golf Professional Association, that, because the other councils may not feel that way. So, if it ends up where all of the council members who play through on this, if that happens, if, uh, it's all guys, it sort of doesn't catch the spirit of the event, so, um, we may want to open it up to both council and potentially staff to make sure that there's enough female players to, um, if we do go that route, to make sure that the optics match the spirit of the event.
So, Councilmember, uh, Carroll brings up a, uh, interesting point, because on the, on the Council Cup, if that, if that doesn't go forward, then obviously, some of this covers that cost. So, if we did approve it and, and turned out that we couldn't put the Council Cup together, could we approve up to the 10,000 and then whatever we don't use as, we return back to the city, or, does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we're gonna, we'll make that happen, because those, these funds are going to be used and they're going to be used to market and, and sell the event, um, you know, across the country and beyond.
Okay. And then, just to, looking at the social media exposure, uh, sample, hashtag Beaumont County, should that be hashtag Beaumont City? Or City, uh, City Beaumont?
Yeah, it should be City.
We haven't told anyone we're one of them.
Making sure. Yeah, I don't want to... Okay, well, I appreciate the due diligence that you've done on this, Todd, and I think, when they... One of the, the things that's important to me is when you circle back to let us know how the, the investment went, worked for us. I think that's a great idea. That's all I have now.
Okay.
So, just for clarification, we're, we're looking at approving 10,000, um, and then the idea of the Council Cup is just an idea that we're going to throw out there. It's not conditional on the 10,000.
No, they're, they're willing and committed to, uh, facilitating the Council Cup, so at your 10,000 level, it's there.
And I think, I need, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Carroll that we do need to try and put, um, I don't think we should restrict it just to council. I think it could be staff, you know, appointed by you, to the city. But you'll see that most of the persons do not, they all have one role in mind.
Yeah, you're gonna have, yeah, you're gonna have a pro with each, with each team, yes. So, it sounds like Mrs. Willwright will be, uh, potentially on a team.
Here we go.
Okay.
I'll take this, I mean, uh, again, on my side is the, you know, uh... So, uh, the, the thing that I really, I mean, you know, on, on really, I'm really concerned is, uh, spending the public money. And I think I expressed this to you, that I don't want to spend the public money on this event. I mean, I, you know, I know, uh, I heard that there's, there's an investment in there, there'll be a, a good investment, and first of all, I really like, uh, the, all the diligence work you have in here, all the contents, this is excellent, man, I mean, uh, it's unreal. And then, all the ideas of the Taste of Beaumont, and also, uh, you know, um, getting the, uh, the Council, uh, you know, Cup. Still, it, it stopped me on, on spending the, uh, the public money, the taxpayers' money. That's what I'm getting at. And then, uh, you know, uh, what's would be probably my solution or something, I could, uh, you know, tell you that, uh, if we could do it instead of sponsoring at, at $10,000 in there, why don't we do a endorsement for that? We endorse them and everything, same, the same event, we will, we will do the, uh, Taste of Beaumont and everything. But if we could do a fundraising instead of, uh, you know, uh, giving that, uh, you know, a sponsorship of 10,000 or less than 10,000, that stopped me, I mean, uh, because I'm more on the public taxpayer. And, uh, hopefully, the, uh, the council or the people out there, or the, uh, Morongo, understand me where I'm getting at. So, that's all I, I like to express to you, thank you.
Mayor, may I respond to that?
Go ahead.
I think originally, when we started talking about this, I, I like the idea of showing a commitment to an event that could become a long-term event. And I think by showing a support through a sponsorship and, and partnering with them on the marketing, partnering with them on putting together a couple of local events for us, um, shows, uh, shows support for this becoming a long-term event. I think if we, if we approach it with an endorsement and with the idea that we can still have those events and maybe turn those into fundraisers, I don't know that that's going to send the same message as it would that, um, that we're going to get this, that we're supporting this long-term. I think the $10,000 spent on this event, bringing people in from all over the area and from our community as well as from neighboring communities, is, um, pardon my, um, my comment, is as good an investment as investing 100,000 in the Cherry Festival. So, um, I think we do the Cherry Festival, we do this event to, to bring awareness to our town and, and to generate business and hotel revenue and build a long-term future, not just, um, just the one year. So, I, I would seriously consider going forward with the 10,000, I think it's a very reasonable amount to, uh, to show our, our support in the very beginning.
At, at first, I was very concerned about your, your comment about the, um, public funds aspect. However, that's why I clarified it is TOT funding, and for the public to be aware, these are not funds that we could go put at Pennsylvania or we can't go put at a park, um, they're, they're categories that have to be spent for certain things. So, I think that budget shows that there is enough money in there that we can do something like this without the public jeopard, you know, thinking that we've jeopardized another project because that 10 could have gone somewhere else. So, I just wanted to clarify then if I'm wrong or misspeak, uh, let me know, but that, that fund category is limited, and this is one of those, um, type of activities that would qualify for that, so, I, I still support that.
I would like to support the comments of Councilmember White. I believe that, uh, what this really is, is marketing the city as well as the LBGA. And I think I always get that backwards, LPGA, I do, I apologize, Mr. Bennecke. But I think it's marketing the city, and $10,000 to potentially begin a continual event that markets the city may be a pretty economical price tag. The other thing, when you market, you have to look at what is the customer that you're trying to attract? And I know that everybody on the council supports the Cherry Festival. This is potentially a different customer, and if you want to well-market the city, you have to make sure that you market to the different phases of the customers that come here. And there isn't another really good choice for some of the customers, so to speak, that you're trying to attract to the city with this marketing event and beginning with this sponsorship. And so, I think it's a pretty effective way. We've got a lot of volunteers that are connected to this $10,000. We've got, um, it's already an ongoing event, and in essence, we're just boosting it. It's good to have partnership with Morongo as a, a partner, that we would be supporting this event. But most of all, it's an angle of marketing the city that is a customer that I don't know how we reach in too many other ways. We don't have, um, sort of too many cultural events, we don't have too many things like that. So, I think that it's actually a, a very good event for us to support. I do think we should measure as much as we can discreetly what the effect of that is and, and try to quantify it and make sure that it is money well-spent, but, um, I think that it's actually a, a pretty good bargain all the way around.
Both Councilmember Martinez and Carolyn and obviously White have touched on the items that I was, I had the same concerns you did as well, but using the TOT, which is specifically earmarked for this type of a, of a use, um, I believe justifies the, the advertising that the city will get, and we are trying to reach out to, to begin to develop more commercial interest in this town. And, and this is one way to do it, and that's why it's important to me to see what the, the effects are or the, the gains or what the results are after the, the tournament closes, and, and then we could evaluate it. Right now, we don't have anything to evaluate, I think it's started, this is its sixth year, um, and, and we, we haven't supported it yet. So, I think Todd has a good plan to, to go back and, and once this is completed, to go back and take a look at financially what, what was the benefit? And, and, you know, maybe next year, it's, it's, it's the same, or maybe it's, we see that there isn't enough benefit to it, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. I'd just like, uh, to, uh, really, I, you know, seeing it on, on the, I know a small, small amount on the budget is 10,000, but on, on the public out there, they're looking on, on, on the, uh, just like, uh, the gentleman came here, why don't you, why, you know, fix my road and everything in here? I know 10,000 will not go far, but it will, it will fix a, uh, small street. And, um, that's what I'm getting at, I mean, uh, you know, uh, I'm heavy on, on marketing, I do agree, everybody here, it's, uh, from the beginning, we need to market, do marketing in our, in our city, that's what we're lacking. I mean, uh, you know, I think it's not time for us to do, to do, uh, you know, use the, uh, public funds on this. And then, what I'm telling you, saying is, is a, to do the, uh, you know, endorsement, we're not backing off, I mean, now, but I don't want that money getting, getting to a, a profit organization, they're not 401(c)(3), right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, uh, that's what I'm getting at, so, uh, thank you. So, I, I need a motion, please?
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, move that we approve the resolution and authorization to enter into a sponsorship agreement for the 2020 event of the IOA Championship for, in the amount of $10,000.
I'll second that.
So, I have, uh, you have the resolution in front of you, and, uh, if you look at section three of the resolution, it says, "The city of Beaumont will also consider a financial contribution not to exceed 10,000." And given the discussion and the motion, I would recommend taking out the words "will also consider" and put in the word "approves."
I'll amend my motion to include that. I'll amend my motion to include that.
I'll second that.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Carol?
Yes.
Mayor Vertellara?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A minor suggestion. The San Gregorio Pass Rotary Club, every year is a charitable event, has a Taste of the Pass. So you might want to alert that club to the fact of what we're doing here and maybe help them with another time or do something just to give them a little advance word that there's going to be a little competition. And maybe they can settle theirs to later in the year.
Same day?
Same day, no. Well, I don't know, maybe it could work with you on something, but anyway, touch base with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move on. Item number nine. Select NG Services U.S. Inc. as the city's partner for design, build energy performance contract services, and authorize city staff to negotiate a contract for services. Stop report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This started a little over 10 months ago. We started getting solicited by various energy companies coming forward, kind of reaching out to us, wanting to come in, look at energy efficiency projects, looking at your lights, to your parking, to just various projects. So the city decided to, came to council, asked you to authorize the release of an RFQ. So we did a request for qualifications to help identify an energy partner moving forward. So as we design new city facilities or remodel city facilities, like this room or things like that, in the future, we'll have an energy partner that can come in and hopefully advise us on some energy-saving, cost-saving measures. These companies talk about everything from, you know, solar and banking the solar to running charging stations or selling that, so, selling that power back to the grid. I mean, you, you name it, they, they can, they can do it. If you can dream it, they can do it. Excuse me. But, so we released the RFQ last summer, along with the, some other RFQs at the same time, so this one kind of took a back burner. We did get five responses. We utilized our normal process. We put it on public purchase and on the city website. It's a national database. We did get five very qualified firms. We created a subcommittee that consisted of folks from facilities, public works, administration, community development. We had individuals from every department represented, reviewed the requests for qualification proposals that were submitted, and then invited the two top firms back for interviews. Again, they were very, very competitive, all of them. Identified the top two. NG has, hands down, the most experience, it seems like, with cities, local governments, counties, school districts, over 45 years in the business. So the committee selected NG as the frontrunner. And it was also noted that Amoresco had some history with the city. They worked with the school district. They also came very highly recommended. They have in-house engineers. They don't use subcontractors so much. There were some positive things there. But at this time, the city is just, where staff's just asking that you allow us to move forward with NG, try to identify some projects. Any future costs or contracts will be brought back to this body, obviously for approval with a budget amendment if necessary. If for some reason, we're unable to come to terms, project base or something like that, we'd like the ability to work with Amoresco as well. That concludes my report. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Any public comments on this? Okay.
Mayor, I was going to say, when we talked, when you talked about that contingency line item in the general fund, this is an example of the types of things we're talking about. So we didn't contemplate that we would be doing a specific project. So there are things that may crop up from time to time throughout the year that we may want to do. So this is an example of how we would potentially deploy those or fund this event or this effort, I should say.
Great.
Thank you.
Any discussions on this?
I just want to clarify, there's no funding commitment to this.
None whatsoever.
Just available if we...
Correct. None whatsoever. We identify a project, we'll bring it back.
Very good. Motion, please.
May I make a motion to select NG Services U.S. Inc. as a preferred consultant for design, build, energy performance, contracting services, and authorize the city staff to negotiate a contract for services. City staff further recommends that city council, we also authorize a negotiation of a contract for services with Am, Amesco, should contract negotiations with NG Services U.S. Inc. fail.
I'll second.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Carol?
Yes.
Mayor Vertellara?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
Yes. Thank you, Carrie. Item number 10. Review of fiscal year 2019 audited financial statements. Stop report.
Mayor, if I can, real quick, one of the things I'd like to apologize to council and the community, the actual audit, the citywide document did not get attached to the agenda packet, and you guys didn't receive that full audit report until this morning. So again, that was on me for failure to provide adequate oversight to make sure that I got this on the agenda for you. So my proposal would be to go ahead and make our presentation to you on the citywide as well as the single, and then, you know, kind of look if you guys want to table this, we can bring this back for final acceptance. But we do have representative with the PUN group here to present to you the results of their work as well.
Okay. Very good. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. It's actually really a pleasure to be able to get this done. And I know we have to come back. I, I get that. But I would like to get the beef of it done tonight, if we can, so that, so that we can, and, and table up any questions that you have for, it's, it's a good time to see in advance, actually. So what we're going to do is run through a PowerPoint. I'm going to just lead off by thanking a few people. I have Vanessa Burke here, who is a partner with the PUN group. This is their third year running our city audit. And I want to take a moment to thank the team that worked on this. The manager, Paul Fangera, I was getting emails for at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. I wasn't actually awake to receive those emails, thankfully. But they, they were quite hard to make sure that we could get this here on time. And so I, I was very pleased that we could get it here despite the glitch that didn't get it posted. There was a lot of work that went into getting this thing here earlier than it's been done in the past. And then lastly, but certainly not least, I want to thank the team that was working on this well before I got here, and in the finance group and across the city. This is a really big effort. It's, it goes on for several months, and there's a lot of effort involved from a lot of parties, but Jennifer Eustachian and Lisa Leach, two people that worked a lot of timeless hours on this. So I want to thank them, and I'll turn it over to Vanessa.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council.
Staff and my constituents, I'm pleased to be here tonight. As Jeff said, this is the earliest that we have ever presented a complete draft. And I apologize for the glitch on the upload. My understanding is, we, is it on?
Am I on? Oh, no, now I'm on. Can you hear me now? Okay, I talk loud, anyway. But my understanding is, we had a security feature in our document, and somehow your system didn't read it. So it tried to upload, but it didn't get in there. So we're just being safe. Anyway, I'm very pleased to be here tonight and not only to present the completed CAFR, it's a signed audit opinion, which means we're done with our audit, but to present the results of our audit as well as to present to you the final city single audit, which is the audit of your federal awards program. And I met last week with several of the members of the Audit and Finance Committee. Jeff presented as well. And so we presented some preliminary remarks at that meeting, but those are now all final. So I'll go ahead and go through my presentation, and then Jeff will have a piece of this as well. So under our professional auditing standards, which we are governed as certified public accountants by the American Institute of CPAs, they set our ground rules for auditing. And as well, because you're a governmental agency, you are audited under the Yellow Book, which is issued by the General Accounting Office, federal government. And so we present our audit and our required communications are driven under those two standards. The first two bullets, and I guess Jeff, you're going to drive the screen, right, for me, since I don't have a clicker, right? So slide three. Really, the first two items, we already went through in detail at the Audit and Finance Committee, which is really discussing kind of the auditor's responsibility under generally accepted auditing standards and the Yellow Book, which is what I'll call the government auditing standards, as well as the scope, the timing of the audit and other. As Jeff pointed out, this is the earliest we've been here. Most audits, this audit is of your fiscal year ending June 30th of 2019. Most audits for most California cities, and we audit about 100 of them throughout the state of California, start and stop take about a six to seven month timeframe. So we come in before the end of the fiscal year. We do planning. We test your internal controls. We do your testing of compliance for your federal audits. We go away. We allow your finance department to close the books and records and get things reconciled and get bank statements in and investment statements and all that, that information needed as of June 30th. And then we return to come back and audit the year-end balances. And so we completed our process probably late November and then rolled right into kind of the financial reporting, where we put together the documents that you have in front of you. We have a lot of back and forth with finance staff to get those numbers memorialized and agreement on them. And then we issue the draft report. Everybody has a say on the 100 and some odd page report, and then we get it on agenda for you. So that's really kind of the, the essential timeframe. Under those required communications, we are required to meet with you at least several times throughout the audit process. Many of you I've met with personally. We've sent confirmations to some of you. We've met with members of management and members of the various departments here in the city as part of our audit process. And that's really a requirement for us to communicate to you in that way in order to ensure two-way communication. The next few bullets on the slide, significant accounting policies, estimates, and disclosures, those are required communications by us to you as those charged with governance because those are subject to estimation and are really a subjective number. And that's where the inputs that go into those are important during the audit process, that we've taken a, a moment to look at those, whether it's valuation technique, whether it's a discount rate, et cetera. And so we'll call a few of those out on the next slide. The other required communications of the following three are required for us to discuss with you. Significant difficulties encountered during the audit, any disagreements with management on the application of generally accepted accounting principles and any other matters within the audit, and then any consultation with other outside accountants. And I would report to you that there were none of those. Of course, every audit has its share of difficulty, and, and we, we don't necessarily rank those or grade those, but we did get through this audit rather smoothly, I think, this year. This is our third year in the audit, where we've learned a lot about the organization. And again, even with the turnover, I, I think that the team really stepped up to the plate. And I do thank all of Jeff's team for doing that on both sides. I think they had to in order to make this happen. The other items that we're required to report are reportable conditions and internal control. And I know many of you I've talked to in past meetings, what is a reportable condition? We basically come in and consider your internal controls over financial reporting for purposes of determining our audit procedures. And we do that on a risk-based process. So we don't look at all internal controls in the organization. We look at those internal controls that are, that are needed in order to ensure that the financial statements do not have misstatements in them, whether due to error or fraud. And we look at those and we report out to you those reportable conditions that we believe to be, one, material weaknesses in internal control, meaning your control structure is not sufficient enough to prevent an error or fraud from occurring that could be material to the financial statements. And two, those that just could rise to a level of warranting your attention as those charged with governance for the organization. And we'll have a slide on that in a little bit. The last is any audit adjustments, and I'll talk about that on the next slide. So if you were to read your CAFR, all 137 pages, those significant accounting policies and estimates are described in Note 1 within the audited CAFR. And it includes an analysis in detail of what significant judgments and estimates are used to come up with those accounts on the financial statements. Those that we consider significant, where there is significant amount of subjectivity, is any estimate of your investment in fair value. So investments are categorized based on risk of their valuation, whether they're category one, category two, or category three. And different protocols are used to value investments in those different buckets. That's called out in your footnotes to the financial statements. Valuation of capital assets, including your infrastructure and any related depreciation, are subject to significant estimation. Infrastructure is an estimate in total, as well as the related depreciation and the service life that that asset is going to be put to use. We had a conversation just tonight. Do you look at a certain repair of a certain line of a sewer system, a small portion as replacing that portion, or do you look at it in total as a system? The other area is net pension liabilities. You have about 16 million, over $16 million on your financial statements at the end of June 30th of 2019. That's a two-years and a rears valuation report. So changes in investment returns and the markets that are happening today, and everybody's hearing about how great that is, it hasn't rolled into those valuation reports yet, but it will in the next few years. But those are subject to, pension liabilities are subject to significant estimation. If you were to look at your disclosures in your footnotes, we've called out kind of a list of those that I would say are important. These are your most significant accounts. If you were to take this and go through and cross-reference and read those footnotes, you'd learn a lot about the City of Beaumont and, and what's really happened in the past over the last audit period, as well as in footnote 15, you'll see what subsequent events are coming up. You've got a planned refunding that may happen here in the near future. Significant audit adjustments. We're required to report to you if there are any unposted audit adjustments that we've discussed with management that have not been reported in your financial statements. And I'm pleased to report to you that there are none to report. Management has posted all of the audit adjustments that we've come up with during the audit. Next slide. So our audit results, this is the part, part. The audit of the basic financial statements means that if we've issued an unmodified opinion, which we have today, and that's what we're presenting to you, your financial statements are fairly stated and fairly presented in all material respects. The significant accounting policies I just described to you in footnote 1, those have been applied consistently across years, and that's important so that the numbers are consistent. We believe your estimates are reasonable and that the assumptions used and inputs to those are also reasonable, and that your disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements. And the second document that you have in Attachment B, that is your single audit, that's your audit of your federal awards programs. You are required to have an audit of federal awards if you spend more than $750,000 in any single year, and you do. You've got a large federal project for transit, and we audited that in the last two years as a federal, federal program for Potrero. In that audit, we report to you our internal control findings over the financial statements, if there are any. We combine that into that report. And I'm pleased to present to you tonight that there are no new material weaknesses. We do have one new deficiency that we've reported in there related to an unauthorized wire transfer that took place. Again, you were subject to a phishing scam, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that when I get into the finding. Major program compliance, we audit that single program for compliance with the federal requirements, and we're required to report to you if there are any findings related to that program that would be direct and material to the program itself. The total dollar amount of that program this year audited was about 4.9 million, and we did not have any findings. And then we're also required to report to you status of prior year findings and any corrective action that you've taken on all of them is reported. You have taken corrective action on all prior findings except for two. So next slide. Slide six. So in the current year, you currently, the way the single audit has been finalized is, we've reported that you have three significant deficiencies and no material weaknesses. So we've reduced the prior year material weaknesses that we had in the report down to significant deficiencies this year for two of the categories. One is 2019-001, which is segregation of duties over business license. And this was really, in prior years, was elevated to be a material weakness and really involves not having the having the same person at the counter, receiving the payment, and actually issuing the business license. And then, if there is no segregation of duty, have a reconciliation process in place. We're still working on this finding, but we did not find any errors in looking at business licenses for the current year as a result of the lack of this control, which means that mitigating controls have been put in place to ensure that the business license revenue is appropriate and accurate. So, we consider that now. Still a significant deficiency, want to bring it to your attention, and staff have a response in there and are working on corrective action on that finding. The next finding, 2019-002, is really your overhead cost allocation. That was partially corrected, and that was done in March of 19, which was during our audit period, which is ending June 30th of 2019. The part that is corrected, there's two pieces to this finding. There's an internal cost allocation that occurs between funds, and then there's also an allowable cost allocation to federal programs. The city of Beaumont currently is not allocating indirect costs to your federal programs, and the reason you're not allocating indirect costs to your federal programs is because you currently don't have an approved indirect cost plan to do that. Now, the federal government changed the rules to allow a 10% de minimis rate to be used in lieu of the indirect cost plan, and we've included that in the finding this year. You could default to the 10%, but once you've made that election, then you can't go back on that election at 10%. So, which one do you put first, the plan or the 10%? So, we're still recommending that you consider doing the full indirect cost plan for federal purposes to see what your rate might be. Maybe your rate's 15%, maybe it's 13%. So, you don't want to lose out on that ability to recover the additional percentage and just default to the 10% rate. Obviously, pension costs are going up, so that rate wouldn't change in the future unless the federal government was to change the statute and allow something higher than 10%. I don't see that happening since they just put that in place. The third finding, 2019-003, is regarding the unauthorized wire transfer I mentioned previously. This is a new finding in this year. This took place later in the year, and essentially what occurred is that a payment was made to a fictitious vendor who essentially processed a wire transfer using new bank account and red routing, bank routing information. So, when that came in on the vendor's letterhead, the accounts payable went through the normal process, updated the vendor master file, processed the payment. The bank actually caught the payment. So, we're considering this a significant deficiency, one, because there weren't preventive controls in place upfront to prevent the error from occurring, and instead, a detective control, which you did have in place at the bank to approve, to mirror and watch those payments, caught it on the back end. The city's essentially recovered almost all of the funds that were wired, but what we're recommending in this is that corrective action, and I know that they've already put this in place, is that any changes to that vendor master file get approved by someone other than the accounts payable process person. So, any change in bank address, bank account, and that prevents duplicate payments from incurring, and these phishing scams, as you know, have increased, well, really, it's increased by about 100% since 2014. And we're seeing more and more of this happening in local government. Obviously, you're erring on the side of transparency, all your payments are online, invoices are online, you have these portals that have an enormous amount of information that's on there, people can perform public information requests and gather that data, and so, really, the mitigating measure has to be internally to prevent changes from occurring and be detected. On the single audit, the highway planning and construction cluster was audited at 4.9 million, that's 99% of all federal expenditures that took place. That doesn't include the local match you were required to make. We did not have any findings or question costs on that. And then, the next slide, slide seven, is status of prior-year findings is also included in the single audit. You'll see last year, you had five material weaknesses and two significant deficiencies, no findings and question costs of those. Two of those have been repeated, 2018-05 and 2018-07, with a slight twist on them, and then, all of the others have been either adopted, adopted within the fiscal year of our audit, and new processes have been put in place. And so, with that, I'm going to turn over the results of the audit over to Jeff to go over a financial overview.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm really pleased, and I would be happy when we're done with this to talk about what we've done with regard to the remaining deficiencies that we've got. I'm going to talk a little bit about numbers, because you know I love numbers, and I want to tell you just a little bit about my thoughts with regard to the audit itself, because it is a voluminous document, and for, you know, my opinion is if you spend some time with the MDNA, which is the management discussion and analysis, and the footnotes, and the footnotes is if you really want to understand how the numbers are generated. It's worth a read if you care, I mean, if you really care to understand, you know, how we measure our investments, how the, don't spend too much time on footnote 10, which is pensions, because it will drive you to craziness. Even I struggle with that one quite a bit. But I think those are worth a read if you really want to understand it, and if you do, then let me know so I can be prepared to answer questions next time. So, this next slide provides an overview of your, essentially, your balance sheet for government-wide, this is everything in the city. At the bottom right, you can see that our assets have gone up, their net position, if you will, assets minus the liabilities, almost $20 million during the year. A few drivers in that, one is that we've driven some more cash up above. You can see that we've gone up from 427 million to 455. Some of that is cash, some of that is assets. But we've also driven our liabilities up. If you see that liability line from 142 to 150, almost 153, and a good chunk of that is actually in what we call unearned revenue. When we bring in either development impact fees or even deposits from contractors and things of that nature, but yet, we have not done the work yet to have earned that money, it's in a liability. We go forward looking at our assets, and we have actually seen some increases on our assets, some land that was donated, and some additional development that's taken place, and then, some grants that have been spent. I'm going to keep going through these fairly rapidly, but happy to come back and spend time on any of them if you like. This next slide provides the income statement side, the revenues and expenses, and a couple of things to point out here is that while you can see our expenses actually slightly down from '18 to '19, that is because we had about $2.7 million in interest expense that you had in '18 that is not there in '19, and that's because we refunded the bonds and took them out of the BFA and moved them into the CFD, and so, they came essentially off of the government-wide books. And with the debt coming off the government-wide books, it also took that interest expense off your books. So, I just didn't want you to be confused to see that we actually had our expenditures go down. It did, it does show here being down about a million and a half, but overall, we also dropped 2.7 in that expense, so if you net those two, we're slightly up. The other thing I would mention is that we have gone up overall, essentially, net position here, 4 million out of essentially our activities from operations, if you will. So, moving forward, this is talking about your business-type activities, which is the wastewater and your transit operations, two things that are comprised here. And you can see, there's some meaningful changes here from year over year, and it's fairly straightforward. You issued debt for your wastewater plant and for the brine line, and you, so you have that on your cash, you have in your assets, you can see they went up significantly from 141 million to 243 almost, and that is driven by that, from that purpose. The assets includes both the cash that we haven't spent yet and the work in progress and the assets that are ongoing. And then, you can see your liabilities went up essentially a comparable amount. I would point out that your net unrestricted position in '19, caught my eye when I first saw that, is that we have both accounts payable and some unearned revenue that have yet to be moved into the available cash at that point in time. I can tell you that we're playing some good catch-up to get that money transferred. What happened is we have significant amount of cash that we brought in in bond resources, bond revenues, but that sits as unearned. It's unrestricted, it's not unrestricted until we actually do the work and we move it over. So, we had at the end of the year a fair amount of restricted funds from the bond proceeds that we had not yet brought over into the city's books, even though we paid the bills. So, we're in the process of getting that corrected, and right now, I can tell you, today, we're sitting on about 2.4 million in that unrestricted line, and over the next 30 days, that money, that number's going to come up quite a bit. If I haven't explained that well, I'll try and be a little more articulate, but bottom line is that negative is a point in time, and it will be, you'll see a significant positive in your unrestricted going forward. So, this talks a little bit about the revenues from operations then, and the biggest highlight I would point out here is you can see the capital grants and contributions went down. We moved some money that we had, and this was one of the audit adjustments that were proposed. We had money that was sitting, diff funds, developmental impact fee funds, that were sitting actually out in the account. We moved them back to their source, basically. Until we spend those monies, we want them to sit in that restricted fund. So, that's part of why you have that difference that took place there. The other thing I would point out here is your investment earnings. If you look at your revenues and transfers, it went up from 1.3 to 5.4. That is because you had investment income on the wastewater bond proceeds. So, we, the money doesn't just sit there, it actually earns interest, and that interest is available for expenditure going forward as part of your project funds. So, now, this gets into the general fund. We're moving forward to talk a little bit about your assets and your liabilities, and you can see our assets went up from about 13.4 million to almost 20 million, and the biggest change in there is that we have a fair amount of cash and unearned income that we've got. So, this is going to be in your deposits that come in, more in your, like in your planning deposits and your public works deposits, where we've got the money sitting in our deposit accounts, but we haven't spent the money. And then, you've got, and you've got some increase in your cash as well. Biggest highlight here is your unassigned, which we've talked about, the unassigned fund balance, went up from about 10.3 to almost $15 million. So, this next slide talks a little bit about the income statement side, again, general fund, and your revenues were up from about 31.8 million to 35.1, so that's a nice increase. It's driven by a number of factors. Part of it is just general increases in your tax returns, you know, the monies that are coming in from sales and property tax, franchise fees, et cetera, but some of it is also development-related. You had pretty good activities in '19 on development. Your expenditures are also up, driven by some added positions, additional costs related to operations. The transfer line, the other financing sources and uses is what we talked to you about transfers quite a bit. The biggest piece of that is, as we talked about before, is transfers that come in from CFDs, the, you know, the operating, the CFDs that support operations, and then, gas tax transfers. Those are the two biggest pieces of that. So, let's talk about the money you have. We'll be talking about this more, we have some budget meetings coming up still, and your unassigned fund balance, which is the money that the council has, you know, the discretion to allocate, went up from about 10.3 to, again, almost 15 million, and you can see that the ratio of annual expenditures, that's that ratio we talk about when we say we want to be at about a 25% and not lower, as far as your safety net for your reserves. This is what we're talking about. You've gone up from 33 to 42 over, from '18 to '19. City average, Vanessa was able to provide a city average, now includes big cities, which can skew the numbers a little bit, but is about 17% in 2018. So, I think we're clearly at 42%. We're on the high side of the equation. Where you should be as a city of our size is probably in the mid-20s. I think the target that you've talked about makes sense to me. The next couple of slides talk a little bit about pensions. I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, because we get, you get a healthy dose of pensions next week, or two weeks from now. We're going to have somebody come in and actually spend about 40 minutes talking to you about pensions. So, bottom line here is, this is miscellaneous side, you have miscellaneous and safety will be on the next slide. You have about a $6.7 million liability, slightly down from last year. Don't get too excited, it's a bit of an anomaly, the numbers are expected to increase. But the real good news is your funded status is close to 77, right around 77%, which I think is on the high side compared to comparable cities. The other side of this is public safety. As you can see, it's a little bit larger liability here, so this is a little over $10 million. Combined, you're over $16 million between the two. What this slide does, the other slides showed it as well, is a sensitivity analysis, and that is if the, if the discount rate is adjusted up or down, if CalPERS makes an assumption that they're going to collect more money from their investments or less money from their investments. It has a fairly significant swing in the liability that we would show on the books. And here, you're showing about a 75% funded for public safety, which, again, is better than the average out there. So, I think the average that we saw, which includes all cities, was, the last one was about 66% is what I had written down.
Yeah, well, and again, that's taken from last year's CAFR, so it's even another year behind on the actuarial valuation, but in '16 and '17, it was 66% funded. This is in total, this isn't splitting the plans, and then, in '18, it was 60%. And that's a survey of about 400 cities throughout California, large and small.
So, you'll hear a lot about this in two weeks, and so, I'm not going to get into it too much further, but it's kind of a tale of two cities. The good news is that Beaumont is actually doing quite well compared to some of your counterparts, other cities, but it's still, it's still a liability looming and some challenges ahead for us. With that, I think we're moving on to any questions that you might have for us.
Have a quick question.
Go ahead.
In the PowerPoint, in your comments, I'm sorry, Jeff, Jeff, right? And in the PowerPoint, you talked about footnotes. Where are they? I'm sorry, I can't, I looked at the...
So, the footnotes are included in your audited financial statement, so you should have a document about ye thick.
They start on page 53 of the big, of the big book.
Yeah, the big book, yeah.
The one that's 125 pages long.
So, page, yeah, and there's an index at 51, so...
It's a big chunk. It's like 20 pages of reading, at least 20.
Okay. Thank you.
You have to be a little hungry for your accounting, for your accounting diet to read them too much, but it does give you a little bit of an idea of kind of how we do things and how we value things, and so, it's not an easy read, but I think it's a good read if you're interested in understanding how the numbers work.
Okay, so, there are notes, not necessarily footnotes, or is that what the...
We call these notes to the basic financial statements, yeah, and we highlighted in the PowerPoint which ones we think are probably the most important.
Okay, and just for the record, then, this is the report that was not included in the agenda packet, correct?
That's correct, it's the big one. I apologize for that.
Just some general ones. I asked during the Finance Audit Committee if we can have a copy of the PowerPoint. I didn't see that, not written.
If we can have one, I'm apologizing.
It were the written, the hard copy of the PowerPoint.
Oh, the PowerPoint.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, we can send that out, yeah, absolutely.
Just that, because there were some numbers that I just wanted to take note on. Just real quick... Just real quickly, on the 10%, on the default versus the plan, is that per audit year? Or is it once you pick one, you stay with it?
On the federal requirement? The 10% is, if you select 10%, you can't change from that, you have to stick with the 10%. So, you're better off getting your plan analyzed and looking at the costs before you make the election, in the event you're over that amount, and you want to try to recover more costs. Just because you have a plan doesn't mean you have to charge the federal grants, but as you start doing more and more grant funding, obviously, this is the first two years you've had a federal single audit in a while, but as your city grows, you'll probably end up doing more. And so, it just would be beneficial to have a full cost plan done, and there are experts that do this, we don't do it, and doing it internally, I wouldn't recommend.
And that should be in place for the next audit, right?
It should be in place, if you're going into your grant application process, before you go into the grant application to get the award, you usually have to call out a line item for indirect costs, and some grants will cap it. Some grants will say, nope, you can only charge 5%. And so, even if it was 10, you're still limited to their 5. Some will allow you to use your plan, but when you build your budget and you're applying for that grant, that's when you need to include a line item for the indirect cost and the percentage that's used.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and if you're doing Department of Health and Human Services-type grants, those, you have a negotiated rate and a provisional rate and things like that, you have to go through a full process on it.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all right now.
I have a couple of questions, but I'm going to end with the, or start with the first question related to what Councilmember Martinez asked. So, we are not including a line item now.
You are not charging federal grants with indirect costs currently, because you don't have a supportable rate plan.
But, when we should, and when we do, we'll have the 10% option, which if we grab, we can't change, or we have to do a study where we make sure that we understand what the exact amount is, if it's different than the 10%.
Yeah, it's an estimated amount of indirect costs based on, you've got to pull together your costs, so it is an estimate, not actual.
That was just clarification, but now, could you go back to the slide where you did bullet items for what the deficiencies were?
Yes.
Please?
I think it was six, Jeff.
It just makes it easier for me than fumbling through the papers. You fumble through the slides. Okay, so, the overhead cost allocation, the partial corrective action was taken, that was when we went and did the evaluation of the assets, correct?
No. So, the partial corrective action, so we're talking about overhead cost or cost allocation, the partial corrective action that was taken is that certain costs within the city are charged from the general fund to sewer, transit, other types of departments and charges. That internal cost allocation, that plan was done in March of 19. The portion where if you then, after you've charged out to all your departments, you now want to take those costs because they're federally related and charge them to a federal grant, that plan is not done.
Okay, thank you. And the, maybe I should hold this question for the pension discussion, in which case, Jeff, if you feel like that's a better fit, you can let me know, but when I was reading through on the pension, it mentioned that if you're with the city, you can cash out if you're under the new plan with the city for your pension and benefits. You can cash out when you're sick, up to, you can hold it for two years, but then you have to cash it out, correct?
Did you sick leave conversion?
Am I getting too much detail for...
Where are you referencing that from?
I know, well, I took a phone call, I wrote down every one of the pages, but that was the one...
Was that the one?
I started to write down the page, and then I took a phone call and I didn't finish.
Are you thinking you have...
I'm going to say...
You're thinking you have sick leave conversion?
The, okay, it's, it's related to when someone gets to hold their sick pay for, and they don't cash, they don't take it, and they get to hold it, and they can hold it for up to two years, correct? And then they have to use it?
I don't know what the timeframe is, I just know upon separation, the employee has the option to convert that to service credit. I don't know, we've never had anybody do it, so I don't know how long they could sit on it, because it would be, it's cash value to the employee, that they either take the cash value and they leave, or I write the check to CalPERS to convert it to service credit.
Okay. I'm just concerned that we're recording that liability correctly as it's accrued. So, I'm going to save that, will we cover that when we get to the...
So, I don't think we'll be really getting into that next, at the meeting. I think if you're talking about the liability for the pension and the liability for, you know, for compensated, you know, for compensated absences, those are, I think those are two different liabilities.
They are two different items, but it was when I was reading through, and we broke it down on liabilities, that we had to, that sick days are accrued, but they can be cashed out, and there's a break if you're in the new program, you can only, if you don't take your sick days, you have to...
Oh, so you're the Pepper folks, yeah, that's not, the older, classic folks can convert up to 1,000 hours or a year to two years of service, where your Pepper folks cannot.
Okay.
But, it's not captured in the pension liability portion, it's captured in this portion, because it's just cash value for the employee, regardless of whether I pay the employee or I pay CalPERS for service credit. So, it's only captured in the audit, it won't be captured in that pension.
It will count as an additional, it counts as an additional year or two, depending upon how many they buy, when the actuary looks at the total liability for that plan, it's built in, but it's, if it's only a one or two person, it's such a small number.
But, if I'm under the old plan, and I don't use my sick days, then can I, if it's the last three years of my employment, can I cash them, and will that boost my pension?
As personable compensation?
There's no interface there, all right. That's really where the liability question was coming from, and I was trying to make sure that, since we do have a significant number of employees who have been here for a period of time, I was trying to make sure that we were recording that liability properly.
We have a thousand...
So, I started with the end of the question, which was really about the pension, which was really about if, in fact, the money could be transferred, and then you could boost your pay in the last three years.
It's not personable comp.
Thank you, okay, I'm not worried, thank you.
It goes in as hours, so they basically do a conversion, and it goes in, and they get credited service for up to 2,080 hours.
Thank you.
Our cap is 1,000 hours, and the most they can buy is six months of...
Of credited service.
Just as long as we're recording it properly, and as long as, if there's any effect on the pension, then I wanted to know.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Very good. Councilwoman White?
So, we talked about the option of choosing to do a study or go 10%, and you said if we go the 10%, we cannot later say we're going to do a study and come back, correct?
I think my understanding is it sticks at the 10%.
Okay.
And I'll verify that, but my understanding from the changes under the uniform guidance is that it's 10%, they allowed the 10% under uniform guidance.
And if it goes the other way, if we start with a study and then later decide we'd rather do the...
I bet they would let you do that, I don't know that yet, I've never seen anybody do that. I've seen most either go 10, or they do the study.
Okay. So, first of all, and I think you can tell by the questions you're getting from us, that this was probably the easiest audit for us to accept, at least in six years that I've been here. First time it's been under eight months. I think it's the first time I've seen an audit without a separate internal control report that is going to come back later, correct?
Right.
The first one I've seen where all the material weaknesses by, in general, have gone down, the significant deficiencies have gone down, and the public questions from our amateur auditors in Beaumont have also gone down. So, I just want to tell you that I think that is a big indication of the auditing and finance team we have, but even more so in the management of the city in addressing the issues, and doing the management of the fiscal. I think if you go back to that, can you go back to the last slide?
Is that seven?
The one that showed the percent, I'm sorry, the very last slide in the presentation.
Oh, the pension?
No, no, sorry, back up a couple, right there.
There.
So, that would technically be, if we didn't spend it, our reserves, correct?
Yep.
For the general fund.
For the general fund, that's your reserves, that's correct.
Okay. And, boy, I remember, Mike, when we started, there was a, we had a $11 million reserve, remember that? So, anyways, so I want to finish with that, and then the last thing, this is not the audit for the wastewater fund, right? Is that correct?
Wastewater is included in the enterprise funds, yes.
Okay.
As a major fund, so it's audited as a major fund.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, probably you could go back on number six, and, so, you know, I'm talking about, on the item in there, it's the significant deficiency in there, the 2019, 002 overhead on the indirect, we've been talking about that, you've been talking about that, and we need the overhead allocations, and then at the same time, are you suggesting also to have a outsourcing, you know, somebody out there so we could have a better report on this, or a better handling of this accounting side?
So, typically, in the industry, you know, you don't have to outsource the preparation of a cost plan, but they're complicated, and there are specialists that do it, and they do it every day. And often, they have a model and tools in which they can import your data, and they can massage it, and get those organized, and develop that rate for you. So, it's independently done, it's an independent assessment of those cost pools to ensure that you're recapturing all the appropriate costs for, one, federal grant reporting, if you choose, as an organization, to choose and charge through indirect costs, and then, two, as part of that process, they're going to look at your overall internal costing model, just so that they can get the cost pools into the right buckets. And there are experts that do this day in and day out, so you would issue a procurement, you'd get bid quotes for those, depending upon the dollar threshold, and then you'd select the best value, I think, from that candidate pool, and then they could come in and start working with Jeff's team to do that.
Very good, because that's the only one, that's findings that, you know, has not been done, or...
Correct.
Okay.
And again, it's an option, right? Some agencies don't charge indirect costs through they want. Often, in social services programs, nonprofits don't charge indirect costs through, because they want to be able to tell their donors that every dollar goes to the recipient and the sponsor, or the person that's needing that benefit. So, we often see in social welfare programs that it doesn't happen, that they make an election not to charge the social programs, but you're really doing capital projects. So, you've got your, you know, project staff, your inspectors, your engineers, all of those other costs internally that you're incurring as part of Petrero, without an avenue to recover some of that.
Very good, thank you.
I just had to go back to this indirect cost plan, is there anything like a TurboTax, if you can buy a software package to do it yourself?
Um...
You know, we have so many consultants, it costs money, it takes away from other things.
Not that I'm aware of. There are software systems out there, budget software systems, that could probably do it, but I don't know what the price of that would run. You could look at it as an option.
I think it would make sense to probably have somebody come out, at least for some period of time, to get us down the road, because, you know, it's got to be, it's got to be defensible in an audit, in a grant audit, you know, so, I think we can maintain it, but I think getting it started, I think it would be good to get some expertise in, I really do.
I agree. So, and on that one, our goal is to, is that correct, we're going to have that fixed by December 2020? Am I reading that right?
So, it would be my goal to, probably in fairly near future, get out and see who's out there, and what kind of cost it would, you know, would, we can go out through the group like CSFO, and we can talk to the auditors about some options that are available to us. I got to see what the cost is, I'll be honest with you, and because if it's a $60,000, $70,000 price tag, we're going to find a different option.
It's not worth it, then, right?
I'm hoping, you know, if it's, if it's a nice, comfortable cost, that can get us down the road, then I'd like to bring that before council in the near future. It will take several months to get from there, once we decide to pull that trigger, to get it implemented, but I hope we can get it done by the end of the year, I do.
Okay.
We also might make the choice that if we get a sticker shock, and if we look at grants that are coming our way, we might go with the 10%, it might be a better option.
Sure, okay. And then, goal for completing or finishing up the segregation of business licenses, what's our goal there?
So, my goal is, we, I looked into this when I found out what our challenges are, I can implement this pretty immediately. What we didn't know is there's some reports you can run out of HDL, which is where we take the business license activity, and that we can do a reconciliation on the backend now. As far as the segregation of duty, I don't have a ready fix for that, because we have, you know, manpower constraints, but the mitigating control is in my shop, for us to do a reconciliation of that source document to the monies that are being deposited, and I think we're in the process of implementing that now. So, I'd say that by March, I'll have that process implemented, and then we'll have to check with our auditors whether it is a satisfactory mitigating control, so.
That's all I have, thank you, Jeff.
Very good. Well, any motion to...
Well, for me, I would make a motion to bring this back next council meeting, only because the financial report was not available, and I just want to make sure that citizens are, have an opportunity to review the financial report, and if there are any questions that that raises, we bring it back and go over it again, that's my suggestion, my motion.
I'll second that.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Potemlara?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
Yes. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good work, Jeff.
Thank you.
Good job.
Item number 11, suggest for direction on custom questions for national committee survey staff report, Ashley. Thank you.
City Mayor Council, the National Community Survey, number 7, and this is a scientific survey, which provides a comprehensive and accurate picture of liability and resident perspective. This... Thank you, Gary. The survey comes standard with the ability to add three to four custom questions, and in addition to the standard and custom questions, the city has chosen to include one open-ended question. Staff has received feedback from various departments and offers the following questions to be included in the custom question field. Number one, please indicate how much of a source, if at all, you consider each of the following to be for obtaining information about city government and its activities, events, and services. And there's a list of different sources available. Number two, please indicate how likely, if at all, you or your family would be interested in attending the following events in Beaumont: a youth family festival, sporting, athletic events, musical performances, art festival, downtown market nights, food and drink festival. Number three, please rate how important, if at all, you think it is for the city of Beaumont to invest resources in the following capital projects within the next five years, which are enhancements to the municipal pool, downtown revitalization, hiking and biking trail system, expansion of public safety facilities, freeway interchange improvements, park and community center improvements, upgrade and expansion of existing athletic and sporting facilities, and local street and traffic flow improvements. Additionally, the following question is recommended for the open-ended question. What do you see as a three, top three needs or priorities for the city of Beaumont? So, the above questions are not final, and they will be reviewed by... So the above questions are not final, and they will be reviewed by the National Research Center to ensure that they are well-balanced and neutral in nature, and at this time, we're asking for your direction on the questions provided.
Very good. Thank you. Public comment, man? Okay, discussion, please, gentlemen? Okay, okay.
So, looks really, looks really well done. My concerns were public safety, infrastructure, homelessness, and as I looked through the survey tool, I saw where it was addressing those, so that I was comfortable with that. I like how the, it has the government section for the city government, for them to respond back to how they think government's doing, so I appreciated that. I don't know if this is just general, but I'm sure you're going to remove the snow removal question, but, but anyway. And the open-ended question, I think, is important. I do agree with the way you, you approach that. It gives them the opportunity to, to chime in, you know, either, you know, the good, bad, the ugly, whatever they, they want to talk about, that would be a great place for it. And it also validates some of the other comments, so if they think that this section has a, you know, high priority for them, then we can go back and see how, you know, that fares on the rest of the survey, so I appreciate that. And again, on the custom, the three with the, the local events, and the sourcing with the communication and the capital projects, I think everything's really well done. It, it is a little lengthy, I kind of did it myself a little bit, and I, I kind of lost it a little where in there, but, you know, it's an important tool, and it does take, it has schools in there, it has water in there, and has a lot of the different aspects, so if we go with it, and this is what it's going to look like, you know, very close, then I'm confident, and I'm, you know, curious to see what some of that data is going to show, but I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the way it looks, is my comment.
Very good, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
So on, actually, on 3E, on, on some of these, what I liked that you did was you, you add examples, like such as, say, 3A, you have splash pads, slides, locker room. On expansion of public safety facilities, could you throw some suggestions in there, or things that you're, you're referring to?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay, just so it's a little bit clearer. And then, on 3E, do freeway interchanges do improvements? That's typically a Caltrans thing, not necessarily a city thing, is that something we want to leave in there, or?
I would leave it in, because, you know, think about Pennsylvania, think about Island Springs, Pachero, I mean, so there is local participation and local dollars that go in.
So, okay, and, and that's a great point, so freeway interchanges such as overpasses, or?
We'd say interchange.
Train separate, or grade separation, something to that effect? Okay. Good job, Ashley.
Okay. Thank you, that was a great job. Together, on the motion? I will entertain a motion. For directions, or?
There's just going to be plenty of room for this.
Is that?
It's a direction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Okay. Go forward on item number 12, approval of purchase order for Siren maintenance and support, staff report, oh, chief.
Unless he keeps hiring deputy chiefs who aren't quite seven feet tall. I noticed that.
There it goes.
There you go.
Good evening, once again, mayor and council. And so previously reported, and as this council approved, we are migrating to the Mark 43 CAD RMS server, but while that system's being custom-built for the Beaumont Police Department, we still have to currently run a CAD RMS system to dispatch our units, process reports, track our, our enforcement data, and so we need to run two systems simultaneously. We think that 2020 would be the last year that we have to pay for the Siren Alliance, and so that, that's our hope, but there's potential that I may have to come back in 2021. At this time, we did budget, in fact, we, we budgeted well in anticipation of this expense, and so we, we asked that the council approve the purchase order for Siren maintenance support in the amount of $44,447.22. And with that, I would be open to questions.
Very good, no public comment, discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion?
I'm good.
I move that we approve the purchase order for Siren maintenance support in the amount of $44,447.22.
I'll second.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Portemlara?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
Yes. Thank you, chief.
Item number 13.
I'm going to recuse myself on this.
Yes.
I'm recusing myself on this item, given that it affects my law firm.
Very good, thank you, John.
And he did request this be item 13, for some reason, I don't know.
Lucky 13.
Item 13, approval of city, city attorney invoices for, for the month of January 2020, staff report.
Thank you, mayor. So total invoices due for our February 3, 2020, which is services basically through the month of January, were $87,324.89. So if you break that down, about half of it, well, about 45% of it, $41,895.80 was attributable to third-party claims. Again, these are lawsuits that we're working on pursuant to our prior year's situation. It's the litigation regarding McFarland and Anderson, Norton Rose, and then Urban Logic. So again, there's about $42,000 in those line items. Retainer and over-retainer was $29,579.05, and then we had additional litigation or other costs that were $15,850.04. So if you look at our retainer, over-retainer, and regular legal, kind of standard legal, and that standard or that other legal includes other pieces of litigation that we're involved with, labor negotiations, any other kind of special legal needs that we have, will kind of fall under some of those costs. We're still on track with regard to our overall legal budget. So we currently have an outstanding invoice to WR COG in the amount of $182,000, and that's to cover, again, the agreed-upon reimbursement, or cover back to the city for pursuing the third-party work that's contributing to WR COG's effort to help prosecute those pieces of litigation, so. Mayor and council, turn it back to you all for questions.
Very good.
Mayor, if there's no objection, and this is not known as Prop 13, I'll move to approve item 13, the city attorney invoices for January 2020.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, I've been accused of approving Prop 13 before, so I just wanted to take you up my nose.
Okay, councilmember White?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Martinez? Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Portemlara?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
Yes.
Well, you're accused of everything.
Oh, yeah.
You turned over everything.
You said I did.
Kidnapped the Lindbergh baby.
There's Kyle.
Okay, he's back. Legislative updates and discussion, Kyle?
There we go. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight before you is the mid-February legislative update. It's pretty short, so I'll get to the point. We want to go back to the bi-monthly updates, just because the legislative session is, is up and running, so we're no longer doing those monthly reports, so you should expect to see me at least twice a month discussing these types of matters. A couple key deadlines to note, one's fun and exciting state of the state provided by Governor Newsom tomorrow, tomorrow, so we'll be watching that, and see what items come out of that, and kind of what projects and programs he's looking to implement this next year. Also of key note, February 21, which is this Friday, is the last day for bills to be introduced, so we expect to see a slew of those coming out through this week. Also, remember the legislative update I did last meeting, some of these bills may be spot bills, so they may be introduced to meet that February 21 deadline, although they may be gotten amended or modified significantly from how they are introduced to when they take final shape and form as we move throughout this legislative session. And then, also a fun one is that spring recess begins on April the 2nd, so we'll know that, kind of what they're up to by April 2nd, and then we'll get a little bit of a reprieve as they head into their spring recess. A couple bills that have been coming out are the energy and IOUs related to the actions during the wildfire season over the last few years, as well as some preventative measures and legislation that's being introduced to hopefully combat or prevent some of the wildfires that we've been experiencing via a proactive approach versus a reactionary approach. There already is three different bills dealing with the topic of development impact mitigation fees, so we're keeping a close eye on those. Unfortunately, Assemblymember Grayson, who had introduced AB 1484 during the last legislative session, had publicly stated that they were willing, excuse me, they were willing to entertain or conduct a public forum in which community stakeholders, cities, and members of the public, developers, would be able to attend and provide insight into the mirage of different issues that go into impact fees, like them or not. It's a very sensitive subject to different parties, and there's a high influence on both sides. Unfortunately, that, that type of public forum is not going to take place, they've reversed their, their stance on that, and at this point in time, Townsend is reporting that there has not been a public forum set up for, for us to, to go up there and publicly speak, or to send information which Townsend can act on our behalf. So we'll monitor that situation and see if anything comes up, or if they, they change stance once again. But there's some other bills that we're following, and as we, we get further along the process, we'll be sure to bring back some of those updates to city council on the legislation that deals with impact fees. So enough of the state, at the federal level, there's been a lot to do with the president's budget proposal. I call it a budget proposal because that's, that's really all it is. The president of the United States has the power and the authority to present an outline of taxing and spending priorities for that administration that they would like to see Congress implement, but Congress is the ones that actually approve the budget. So as we've seen in years past, the president may propose significant cuts in departments like the Department of Commerce, where this last budget proposal, he's looking for a 48% reduction in funding to that one department, but Congress historically has not, has not followed suit with that. So it is in their, their authority to actually approve the budget, but it is an idea of where the presidency sits on certain issues related to commerce, defense, education, environmental policies, and so forth. So that is all I have for you tonight, unless you have any questions, and the chief of police would also like to, to jump in and do some legislative update on the side of policing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a few items we're following. If you remember, this council approved a proclamation in 2019, the Keeping, or the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2019. California Secretary of State didn't verify that to get it onto, or for 2018 to get it onto the election, and so it's back for 2020, so we're following that. It was, there was an assembly hearing at the Capitol, the members that were present didn't express much support. That was anticipated by Cal chiefs, but the hearing is only symbolic, and it doesn't have any significant bearing on the ballot measure itself. There's a bill currently, AB 1921, which would amend the law regarding vehicle break-ins, and so if this was to pass, it would no longer require a vehicle to be locked to be charged as a felony to be broken into. So currently, somebody opens your car, rifles it, it's a misdemeanor unless they take a certain amount of value that then advances it into a felony theft. And the governor is comprising a task force to revise the California Penal Code, so he has about $576,000 to initiate a study of the penal code is, it's about yay thick. So we'll wait to see what's happening with that, and, and hopefully those things go in the favor of crime victims, and we'll be hopeful. If there's any questions on those topics, I can answer them for you.
Very good.
Quick question.
Very good, go ahead, Dan.
I don't believe it's one of the issues you covered, but it is an issue that would be on the November ballot, which is an initiative, a proposition to reform the criminal sentencing rules, are you familiar with that issue? It's initiative, I think it's got enough signatures to be on November ballot.
Is that separate from the bail reform? Is that the sentencing guidelines?
Yes.
I'm not too familiar.
It takes some of the Prop 47, Prop 57 crimes that were classified as not felonies?
And to change them back, right?
To give the judges a little bit more, that's what I'm looking for, discretion, taking a little more discretion on, on how to charge those. So I just wanted to put that on your radar so that we could at least be aware of it. I don't know, do cities take positions on ballot initiatives? I'm not sure what that, you know, what that, that approach is, but I would like to at least get on your radar and sort of get some feedback, but you know?
Yeah, absolutely, I'll search for that and, and report back. You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, council reports. Council?
Can I go first?
Oh, okay, go ahead.
So I've been on Fox News commercials, I've been on ESPN commercials?
Fox News commercials, ESPN commercials? I'm a famous guy. That's all I got to report. No, it's the, it's the wrong boy, right? CNN?
CNN?
CNN also.
Oh, that helps. That one helps.
Anyone who volunteer, go ahead, Dan.
I just want to make folks aware that the Beaumont High School will host CAF wrestling championships on Friday, February 21, starting at 10:30, 11 o'clock, and on Saturday, starting at around 9:00, 9:30. This is a very large event, obviously it's a two-day event, and I just want to remind folks, go out and show your support. Thank you, that's all I have.
Sorry. I attended a very interesting event, I was asked to judge a high school debate competition. The high school students compete, and they get points, and they take those points, and they get credited towards regional standing. So it was actually the first time I've ever had to judge that. I did it myself in high school, so when they asked me, I was very interested. It was a great event, it was really, really fun to see the kids prepare. Some of the kids only have 20 minutes to prepare, depending on So every month, they have a different program, and it was very enjoyable and informative. Thank you. Oh, and the special meeting for the Finance and Audit Committee, where we saw the preview of the audit, which was good. We had, and we do need some additional people for the Finance and Audit, so we have some open seats, Nicole, so we need to talk about that moving forward. That's it. Thank you.
Nancy, where was the debates? Was that in Highland?
Highland, yeah.
Okay.
So very short. I attended Career Day at Three Rings Ranch Elementary, and I spoke to some fourth graders, quite a few fourth graders, and it was really neat to see how much they really know about their city. It's interesting to see what their wants are and some of their things that they know about, and it was refreshing. I pulled all of us up on the big TV, and we went through how city government works, and they wanted to know who the mayor was, and we went through all our council members, so they were impressed to see that. And they were actually really in tune with government, so I was really impressed. They tried to tie me down to see who I was voting for president, but I wouldn't tell them, because I told them I don't do that. But they tried several, several times. They were determined for me to make a commitment, but anyway, that was enjoyable, so I wanted to share it.
Very good. Councilor? You're good? Okay.
You didn't hear what I had to say?
I want to hear it again. I want to hear it again.
Wasn't that good the first time?
I attended the Bunning Chamber of Commerce, and that was interesting, being there, and met the new mayor there also, Andre. Then the other one is I went to SCAG. I mean, still, they're not decided on really what's the allocation on the, every region. On our side here, we're good, allocation of homes, I mean, units, we're on 4,000. I mean, before it was 6,000. And now the County of Orange is complaining about their allocation, so we don't have a, really a big, you know, answer this coming March. Still, argument and discussion will be raised on March. And then I'd like to share one of the AB, you know, 1482, because I heard, you know, what's AB 82 is the rent control. Rent control is, I know, I mean, you know, it's more on, because I went to one gathering, and I was, you know, was mentioned about the rent control, and that has been approved. I mean, effective by, you know, January 1 of this year, 2020. And what is the rent control? The whole state is under rent control. There's a 5% of, you know, increase, an annual increase on that, plus the CPI. I mean, what's the CPI in our region is 2.8, and you could increase your rent up to 10% of this, you know, effective date. So I'd just like to share with you that on Steve, I mean, on the rent side, and there's more detail on that side. So if you have any questions on that, I'll be happy to sit down with you and give more detail on that proposition. I mean, not proposition, I mean, AB 1482. That has been approved. That's all I have. Okay. Economic Development. Oh, let me add on. I mean, on the economic development, we had a meeting last week, and we have a new chairperson. I know Kyle will, you know, will address that, and really excited about the new setup on the economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for that perfect segue into this. I do have to state that I'm probably watching the wrong TV stations if I've not seen Councilmember White on TV. I am also going to have to ask for your autograph on my agenda post-meeting, just so that I have it on there. For the Economic Development Committee, we did meet last week, and as the mayor alluded to, there was the annual reorganization that took place. The new chairperson of the committee is Dr. Eben Brown from the school district, and the vice chair is Mr. Vaughn Lawson from Mount San Sento Community College. And then you have me as the secretary once again, so thank you so much for reappointing me to that position. The committee meeting itself went pretty smooth. Staff did provide our routine update on the major projects that are going on within the city, one from the public side on what projects the city's performing and implementing, as well as other projects that are being done by the private sector, specifically the progress that's being made out at San Gregonio Village with those exciting enterprises that are moving forward. In addition to that, there was also a update on where we are so far on the downtown specific plan, because the committee had asked for an update on that. There was some interest to look at what the city is doing and conducting as it relates to the downtown development. And really, the presentation was done in such a way that it was going to be spurring thoughts within the different committee members. We didn't have a lengthy discussion at the meeting, but the intent from staff's perspective was to kind of give them some information, allow them to think about it for a month or two, and really foster new ideas in their brains on what they think might be able to be implemented in that plan once it gets approved with the general plan update. So I think that's everything, unless the mayor, the mayor pro tem, want to add anything after on the committee.
Just your enthusiasm that you, it just bubbles over when you're the secretary in that meeting. I just want to thank you for that, Kyle.
Thank you. I don't want to let you down.
I'll second that. Okay. City treasurer report.
Yeah, it's going to be fairly quick, because what we did, we had a special meeting with the Finance and Audit Committee last week to preview this, and I know the committee that was represented and the other folks are pretty happy. This is my first full cycle through the process, and last year, looking and struggling to get this thing out sometime in April, and this year, we're making the target line that we're in there. And then to look at the deficiencies this year, there's, you know, no material deficiencies and only three. Todd, you've got a great team there. I'm here every week, and I know they did a lot of work working with the auditors. It took a lot out of them. But, you know, the thing I heard this year, they asked for a lot, but they knew where it was this year, when the auditors came in, which helped it. They didn't have access to it. So great job to Jeff and your folks down there. Really a good job. And I just had one thing that you got asked to be on the debate, to be a judge. I had the opportunity once, I was in Haiti, and I had a chance to judge the cooking contest at the school of, you know, hotel food administration that they had for the locals. And I thought, this is pretty good. I'm getting a great meal and everything else, you know. I was the head economics chief down there for the military, but they handed me a little card and said, here are the winners. You know, I mean, I can judge food. I eat pretty good, but they handed me, said, don't get carried away. I mean, it was all very good, but they said, here's who we want to win. Did they do that to you?
No. She's a judge.
I took the free meal.
Okay. Thank you.
You're on the record now.
City clerk report, please.
Thank you. I attended a clerk training session up in Northern California, Rancho Cordova. It was very informative. The most important thing I learned is how hard she works, and how valuable she is, and how lucky we are to have her. That's all I have.
Thank you. City manager report. Here we go.
We need another one.
Missed the city attorney.
Yeah. Yeah, he stays in here.
He's not on the.
Okay, I can back off and say, city attorney report. Not to report. See?
Yeah, that happened when you recused yourself.
We just forgot to save money at these meetings. I appreciate y'all's patience and a couple issues on the agenda tonight, so again, that's on me, and I apologize for that. We had a meeting in Riverside, city representatives and water district representatives to discuss ramifications or, I guess, the issues attached to our respective organizations as we move forward to our contracts with regard to the conveyance of reclaimed water from the city to the district. So there's some critical elements to all that that we're going to have to work through, so, but it was a good meeting, so we'll continue to work through there, and we're working with the district to begin to develop what we need to do with our two-by-two. So it'll be time to bring the two-by-two back together, PDQ, so we can, you know, get moving and get these conversations. I know the district really needs to have some input, and especially as they're looking at needing to plan out some of their capital. So that was a critical thing that was there. And so the last thing I needed to communicate was something that Mr. Pinkney asked me to convey, and that was, do you know what you get when you cross the Godfather with an attorney? You get an offer you can't understand. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, city manager. Okay. Future agenda items? Any?
No, I'm good.
Oh, good. Okay. Next meeting will be on March 3, 2020?
I'm going to, we did get a pass zone report from WRCOG, which talked about the priority of the projects and the projects for WRCOG through the pass zone. And should we discuss that and put that on the agenda? Because of the Brown Act, we can't really talk amongst ourselves, and I don't see any other way for us to get a good, open discussion about concerns or support that we want to give for anything that's in there, and making sure that we know how it's going to move forward from there.
Would you like that on the March 3, the next city council meeting?
I think so.
I think it's important.
Got it.
Okay. Next meeting, March 3, 2020, and I join this at 8:45. Thank you, guys.
I was going to try to drag, get out, get clothes, but.